And I have real cool. Councilmembers Abdul Rashid. Councilmember Corbin?
Here.
Councilmember Easton?
Here.
Councilmember Claude Butler? Councilmember Jones Bell?
Here.
Councilmember Marable?
Yes.
Council President Wade?
Present.
Also present, Ms. Smith, Deputy Municipal Clerk. Mr. Smith, City Attorney. Ms. Amia from the Clerk's Office, Mr. Matt, the Acting Business Administrator.
Before we start, I just want to, just some housekeeping issues. We're currently having problems with Channel 35. So if the public is watching and the picture goes in and out, would you be so kind to text somebody so we'll know what's going on? And we apologize for starting late, but we had to take care of some things. Thank you. Can we please stand for a moment in silence?
Please be apprised that anybody wishing to discuss agenda or general items shall sign one book. There will be two columns in the book. One for agenda items and one for general issues. Each person signing the book will check agenda items or general issues. If they check only agenda items or general issues, they will be allowed to speak for five minutes. If they check general issues and agenda items, they will be allowed to speak for 10 minutes. The requirement of NJSA 10:4-9, the Sunshine Law, has been met. A notice of this meeting was sent to the Star Ledger and published in the Record Transcript on July 18, 2013, posted on the bulletin board in City Hall, and filed in the office of the Municipal Clerk. Item number three, we have matters for discussion. Presentation by Hazel Lucas, HIV awareness. Councilwoman Corbin?
Thank you, Council President. Ms. Lucas, if you would come forward, please. I'm presenting two items tonight, both of which surround quality of life issues, which, of course, as we all know, are very important to the city of Orange. Take the podium, please. You stand right behind, on the other side, right? No, 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 face us, face us. Right.
Hi, my name is Hazel B. Lucas. I'm a HIV program coordinator, a counselor and tester at East Orange Health Department.
Right.
I just wanted to...
Before you begin, I just want to provide the council a little bit of information. Back in the summer, early part of the summer, there was a, sometime of an event over on Hampton Terrace, which is where you and I met, and we had a nice conversation surrounding HIV awareness. And some of that information that you provided to me had my head spinning. Because as I know, HIV, we don't hear much about it any longer, but after having the conversation with you, you certainly made me aware that it is still very prevalent out there, and people need to know about it. We know about the cocktails that people are now taking that helps them to live with the disease, but yet, we still don't have and get enough information about it. Out front of City Hall, we do have a marquee that continuously flashes information about HIV testing and where you can go to get those tests done, which is in East Orange. And so with that information being flashing out there, still, people are not actually going to get themselves tested, which is why I asked Ms. Hazel Lucas to come tonight and explain to us what's happening around HIV.
Okay. Hazel, before you start, Councilwoman Corbin, are you testing out there now?
No, no.
No, okay, that's all, this is wonderful, okay. Thank you.
I'm not going to take much of your time.
That's all right.
But I just wanted to let people know that HIV and AIDS is very much out there. It's bigger now than I can recall when I was like a young girl coming out of high school in 1980, 81. The age 13 to 35 is just off the charts. And now, it has come to the part that our 50-plus and our seniors is up on the rise. I never had to order brochures for 50-plus or seniors. It's gotten that high that I have to order brochures. When you start getting 60, 62, 67, 78-year-olds coming in for HIV testing and along high-risk behaviors with it, then you try to, you know, make people more aware of and let them know that you, it has to be a voice, someone has to say something or do something to try to, you know, to help them and to assist them with their needs. A lot of people don't like to use protection, so now we're making it where protection comes in a lot of different ways, a lot of different ways to help the people. And also for care, we have better care, better medicine now. Don't have to have multiple pills, you can have one pill. There's still an open window, period, you know? And then anytime you have unprotected sex, don't care if it's yesterday, today, if you just got to test out, come and get tested. Come and get tested right away, don't wait. But that's all I really have to say because it's so long. And anything you want to know or you feel, without listening to anyone else, you go to CDC.org to send a disease control, and you'll find out it's bigger than you imagined. It really is.
So you mentioned seniors coming in and being tested.
Yeah.
Are you finding a large number of seniors that are infected with HIV?
Well, I call it the 50-plus because that's how high it goes from 50 on up. It has risen from like really high, and they are actually positive because they're sleeping with the younger ladies, you know, the much younger ladies. The bracket that's the highest is 13 to 35, you know? And some people, remember when you were young, they think they're invincible at that age.
Right, right. So when people come to you for testing, are you, how long does it take before they get the results?
You get results and everything in 15 minutes.
Wow, that fast.
Everything in 15 minutes. No 20 minutes, and you can always test anonymous or confidential, it's your choice.
That was going to be my next question.
Yes.
But you do not provide the names of individuals who do test positive?
No, it's confidential. It goes straight to the state. Even if you tested today, you came back the next day and said, "I want a copy of my results." I could not provide that for you. You would have to do a retest.
Why is that?
Because there's no name, this anonymous testing, it's confidential. I can't say...
You're saying if he tested the first time anonymously?
Like, yes, if you tested today, you cannot come tomorrow and say, "I need a copy of my test."
Because it's a risk. She won't know which your test is.
Yes.
I see, I see. So we are really trying to encourage folks, actually, it doesn't matter what age group you fall in, HIV is still very much out there, people need to be made aware of that, and we want to encourage folks to come in for testing.
Yes, and we have something for everybody. It doesn't matter what your sexual behaviors are, we have something for everybody.
Does Zinni, go ahead.
Thank you. If you have the stats, because I heard a few years ago, I was HIV health educator, I don't know if I told you, at UMD. They had stats out a while ago, but they've gotten worse. The population, the senior population you're talking about? What nationality are you referring to?
Right now, I would say black, black men, just regular black men, that's in the senior homes, they are like pretty high. And far as the other nationality, mostly Haitian, Nigerian, Trinidadians, and that's because of their cultures, their belief.
Or minorities.
Yeah, they don't believe in certain things.
Ms. Hazel, just before, are you complete your presentation?
Yes, but I'm open to any questions.
Okay, that's what I just wanted to make sure. Councilmembers, are there any questions?
Councilwoman Wade, I have a question for first, I'd like to know you, let you know that the TV is going in and out, the, I just got a text, that it's going in and out.
Okay, thank you.
So is the percentage for men higher than women in the senior building?
I would say yes, definitely, definitely. But they are coming to be tested though, which is important.
Ms. Hazel, have you, have you had the opportunity to get, go to each of our senior builders and present?
No, I mean, that would be wonderful. I would love to, you know, go there to test if they allow me.
Councilwoman Jones Bell?
Yeah, we, we've had HIV health educators there from UMD, and I think East Orange General did come before, but this is a while back. But we do plan on having another one because the high-risk behaviors are very acute now.
Yes.
I mean, and people in senior buildings die regularly anyway because of, sometimes because of old age, but a lot of times, you know, it's because of drugs, it's the high-risk behaviors. And then the partners, the exchange. So at any rate, I'd like to get your information.
Yes.
So you could be one of the, well, the HIV health fair, I guess we'll call it, because people need to know more about it. So many people are resisting, you'd be surprised.
Yes, they are.
I would, I can't, I, it would never be me, I'm clean, I've only had sex with my husband, that always used to break my heart.
Councilwoman Corbin?
I was going to ask, have you done any testing here in Orange? And are you getting a good response from the citizens here in Orange to come for testing?
No, earlier this year, I had set up with Orange, but some things changed. They told me that they would notify me, but I never got a response. So they stated that they would keep it on, the itinerary on the board, telling all of the Orange to come to East Orange, which they have been coming, because it doesn't matter where you from, we take, yeah, it doesn't matter.
So Councilwoman Corbin and Councilwoman Jones Bell, can you work to get at least into senior buildings and then maybe out to...
Yeah, we can partner up and do that, because we need to get into the senior citizen buildings and make these folks aware of exactly what's at stake here. Because as long as people don't know, they won't do anything about it. But hopefully, when people do know, they want to become more aware and want to give as much information as they can around this.
And also, Councilwoman Easton, if I can impose to the PTO, see if there's anything to the big health fair at the school that you do annually?
You know, we have a meeting on Thursday. I'll make sure I let them know that we can make that part of something we're doing in the school district.
Excuse me, if I may, what I'd like to do is, I'd like to do it, possibly, we could get St. Matthews, because we need a bigger venue to have everybody in, where nobody else's hands are in it, and nobody thinks it's theirs, you know, so that it's neutral ground.
Right. We can certainly work out all the particulars offline, as long as we have Ms. Lucas on board with us.
I thought we were...
I'm sorry, Councilwoman Lee?
If we're dealing with the seniors, I think it makes more sense if we do each individual building, because a lot of them don't drive at night, and then if you do it at St. Matthews...
We'd have the bus, for sure.
Especially for mine, you would have, but a lot of them don't go out at night. So I'm going to do 98th Street.
Councilwoman's going to ask if you three, who've taken great interest, no, you can take it, we'll work it out, okay. Ms. Hazel, do you have any information that you believe individually, or if not, Councilwoman?
Yes, if you would like, I'll bring, I have it right here.
Thank you. Councilwoman Corbin?
Next up is another quality of life issue, which is a presentation tonight by our police director, Mr. Hakeem Sims.
Director Sims. Councilwoman Corbin, you want to do an intro, or he can do his own?
Sure, I'll do a quick intro. Director Sims, as you know, all of Orange, I won't say any particular property, all of Orange is quite interested in our public safety. And of course, with you being at the helm of that, I've asked you to come and give us some numbers and some facts on what you've been doing this summer. We know about your strike initiative program, and many people are quite interested in knowing exactly how that went this summer. So if you will, you can start right there.
Thank you. Hakeem Sims, Orange Police Director. First, I'd like to extend a happy holidays to anyone in the listening audience, a happy holiday for the Muslim community, even about it. The events that we've been experiencing this year are not very different from previous years as far as the crime is concerned. However, one of the initiatives that I, along with the command staff, have taken is to try to get away from the conventional way we've been doing things and move people around from their normal sectors and normal way of working to attempt to flood the areas that have been plagued with most of the violence that we've had. And that initial initiative was the strike program. Strike had several, was an acronym for several things, and then myself and the mayor and the other administrators, they came up with Secure Track Remove in Orange Violence, Keeping Orange Safe. And that spelled out several things that I was attempting to do. The first part of strike, being that it was a six-month program that was running from March to August, was the, in two-month blocks, we would attempt certain things. The first two months were to go out and find out who our main offenders were. Once we got that information, then we would begin to take as much information from them, get as much information about these individuals as possible, and then toward the end, remove them through arrest or any other means that we had at our disposal. It was successful in the, with the initiative. We, however, we have experienced that parts of the plan where it worked did not because we had to go back to regular patrolling and work schedules, and that happened this way. The first two months, I flooded all areas of the city with individuals from the police department that worked in administrative duties, court duties, detective bureau, and what have you. What that did was it added personnel to the street. And with that added number of personnel, we noticed several things that happened. One, it was a shock to those in our streets that were bent on committing crimes. We saw a slight reduction in overtime. We saw a happier face in certain communities, knowing that we have more police in the area. And with that, some of the numbers that I'll give you now are certainly indicative of that effort. From that March to August, we had 470 arrests, and that's within six months. Now, that number alone, when I heard, I asked my people, I said, "Listen, don't, I don't need you to pad the numbers. I want to know actual numbers." They said, "No, we had 470 arrests in six months." And that was with this initiative. What that tells me, one, they worked, they worked hard, but it was 470 people that were committing crimes within six months that we caught. That's a lot, that's a lot of people. With that 470 arrests, it was 1,154 charges. From those arrests, there was 19 handguns that were seized in that six-month period. A total just over $20,000 in seized money, narcotics money, that a portion will come back to the city once it travels through the county, the county system. And about 314 city ordinance violations. All of that money comes back to the city. But these are, you know, where the numbers are very good and show activity, and where the numbers show that the flooding of our streets with personnel that would not normally be in the street are in the street working, only tells me, and it should tell you, the Orange Police Department needs more people. Because what happened after the people that I put in the streets that were normally doing other jobs, they had to go back to their normal duties. Their normal duties were, just take for instance, our court squad, I had three people in that squad, their work backed up. And they had to daily call the Essex County Prosecutor's Office for all kinds of issues and information. Prosecutor's Office eventually was calling, saying, "What's going on, Orange? We're not getting the information that we need." Those people were out during the daytime in these hotspot areas. So once we got to our second phase, that second two-block portion of strike, where they had to go back and do their work and clear up some of their work, we did see a slight rise in some of the offenses that were taking place in the street. But there was that third block of help when they went back out during July and August, where we continued to make some of these arrests and amounts, and amass some of these That first two blocks, where I mentioned that we had a slight reduction in overtime is because we had a number of people in the streets, and it increased and bettered the morale of the police officers, where the normal patrol officer said, "Hey, I have additional help out here. Now I can go do something other than going from call to call. Now I can police these communities or these streets." And I, you know, it's, for my 24 years, I'm constantly going to get the phone calls from people saying, "There's no police over here." 470 arrests, police were somewhere, somewhere in Orange. They were making arrests. Just yesterday, I got a phone call, a text, someone said, "You know, you got to get some people over here, we're not seeing the enforcement." You have to understand the process. If I have two police officers that go to one street and they make an arrest, and if that's their sector, while they're inside processing this arrest, a lot of times, they can't get another person over there to fill in. Because if I fill in from somewhere else, then I leave another place exposed. So it's not that we're not addressing these issues, because I know you all get calls, where people are saying they're not seeing the police. That's not true. During that six months, 470 arrests, that means the police officers were working. So the plan worked, it gave us an idea which later spawned a movement of police officers from one zone to another, and held supervisors accountable to patrol other areas that were not as affected as some others. Now, I got a phone call during the summer blaming me for taking a police officer out of a certain area, leaving me exposed. They were right in one part. I did move a police officer from one area to another, but I replaced that police officer with a supervisor. To, now, the supervisor can't just ride the entire city, he has to patrol that one sector while we put a patrol officer somewhere else. That's going to do, for lack of a better term, the grunt work. He's going to get out and do what I used to love to do, run through backyard yards and look for people. Where the supervisor now, the sergeants or lieutenants, are more in charge of supervising the duties rather than getting out there and doing the same thing, but they can patrol, they can be a deterrent. So strike was a success for me in that I know we can do the work with the right numbers. The one thing that was unavailable to me that I set out to use was the assistance of the federal government, where one of our federal agencies, which is working on something with us now, was unable to really come out and help because of the events of the Boston Marathon. Once that occurred in April, that pulled all their resources, where they could not really come and help us the way that they wanted. But now they're, we're more than one agency, we are involved in some investigations. So where it's not a part of the strike, it is going to be a part of helping to remove crime from the Orange streets. Right now, for the upcoming holiday season, we're going to have some form of strike. One thing I did not mention, let me go back to, was the use of the JAG fund, the Justice Aid Grants. That's money that we get as a grant, where we can pay officers to work extra duty and work the streets and try to do as much as they can as a crime stopper vehicle. It's usually a two-man vehicle, two, police officer vehicle, could be more than one or two vehicles out there at any given time. But that money comes back to us as we spend it. For the holiday season, we're going to put something similar out. I don't want to say exactly what it is, but I'm going to utilize the monies as best as I can, trying to keep our overtime down as best I can. But we have to look to do something for this holiday season because of the, you know, the financial situation as it is, everybody has a certain amount of money that they want to keep in their pocket, and I may have a certain element out there that might want to remove it. I don't, I can't allow that to happen. So we have to address the nefarious nature of some people somehow, and that's what I plan to do. So there are some things in the works for the holiday season. Any questions?
Yeah, Councilwoman Corbin?
Councilwoman Easton?
Director, are you aware there's an increase in, I don't know what the proper terminology is, addicts, drug addicts, stealing people's gutters and things off of their houses? I had a personal experience this week, and I don't know how he got way over by my side of town, but I guess everything had been depleted on this side, so they're looking for a wider area. And the gentleman came in my yard, and I guess he was looking by my garage to see what he could pick up to sell at the junkyard, but he took my rolling garbage can. Now, he got to the end of Cleveland and all, and a police officer stopped him, but the officer never took the time to get out of his car to see what he was pulling in a garbage can. And I know he's known by all the police officers, it had to be somebody's stuff, you know what I'm saying? They didn't, he didn't check to see if he had broken into a house or if he had what was in there. Needless to say, by the time my sister caught up with him, he was on North Center by J&amp;As, my rolling garbage can. It wasn't any of my stuff in there, but he had somebody's. But my concern is when officers see people that they know don't have jobs pulling a rolling garbage can, there's something in there that belongs to somebody besides them. And I think they should take the time, I think someone forgot what their feet are for, take the time to get out their car, open the garbage can to see what's in it. And then if the person can't explain why or where they got it from, then they need to take in the police headquarters and see if anybody calls and misses anything. So that's what's on the rise right now. So I'm just asking that you make your officers aware that they need to do that, because when residents see them stop and talk to somebody pulling a rolling garbage can, and they don't even bother to get out the car to see what's in it, that's an issue. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Okay, thank you.
Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman Corbin?
Director Sims, you mentioned the statistics for arrests between the month of March through August as being 470 arrests. Do you have a comparison of the same time last year and how many arrests were made in that same period?
I have done that. What I, I didn't do the number of arrests, but we did do a check using the UCR, Unified Crime Report, of crimes committed in Orange over a period last year, and then the same By and large, our violent crimes have increased slightly. And I, I won't say that it is specific to Orange, because the most populated cities within the county, you know, north, urban, east Orange, Orange, Belleville, they've all seen an increase in violent crime. It's just something that happened this past year that we are trying to get a hold on, and much of it is of gun violence or weapon violence. But the only way to really deal with that is with enforcement, a strict enforcement and flooding the areas to, and training the officers, retraining on how to be observed on certain things. What we did find a drop in was some of the larc, all of the larceny's, we saw a drop. The burglaries, they dropped 17 percent. Simple assaults dropped, but it was the, our rape have dropped significantly over half, 53 percent specifically.
Rapes, you said?
Rapes, yes. And I can, it's really hard to gauge when a crime is going to decline, other than when you know you're putting more people out in the street. Those crimes of opportunity decline when they see more police. That was one of the reasons why, I think I discussed it here at the council meeting, that when the officers are on the... that when the officers are on what we call a directed patrol, when they're in one particular spot, and they're just being there as a presence, they need to get out of the vehicle and walk around. Almost speaks to what Councilperson Easton was talking about. They need to be able to get out and use their feet. I come from that, my first two years, I was a walking person. So, I understand walking a beat, but all I want them to do is just within proxy, close proximity to their vehicle, get out and walk around. That's going to help. And that's part of what I'm going to do for the holiday season. They have to be seen, quite, a lot like the pufferfish, you know? Pufferfish, it has a little danger, it swells up, make it look bigger than what it is. Well, I have a vehicle here and an officer there, they don't know how many people are around. So, I have to, you know, fake it until we make it the right way. But combine that with the proper training, and make, have the officers be more aware of what's around them, other than the obvious and what hits them in the face.
To your point that you made not too long ago moments ago concerning the, the actual folks who are committing the crime in our city. Case in point, maybe about two weeks ago, we had a shooting just off of Lincoln Avenue, and the victim was from Maplewood. We have no idea where the shooter came from, but we know that the victim was doing something that he had absolutely no business doing here in the city of Orange. So, we do have a lot of that. Someone just mentioned to me that we could certainly use more of a police presence during the early morning. I guess while the kids are on their way to school and so forth and so on, and folks are on their way to work, I guess we could, some people would like to see more police officers out there, if that's possible. I have received a, a issue around Central Place, where police officers have responded, and there have been drug dealings and things of that nature going on, and some police officers don't even get out of their car. I still get those types of reports. But I will commend you on the job that you've done through strike, which has made Orange Police Department more visible. And so, that has made you guys more proactive, which is something that I have certainly been asking for, for a good number of years, now that our Orange Police Department become more proactive as opposed to reactive, and send a message out there that we are, we are out there, we are doing what we're supposed to do, we're trying to send a message to the bad guy that don't come through Orange. I would like to see you guys better equipped with modern-day technology, in particular, the piece that reads license plates. I forget what they call that one.
The ALPR, Automatic License Plate Reader.
Right. 'Cause I understand we only have one of those.
Yes.
And if we can get our hands on another one, it certainly would pay for itself. And that is what other municipalities have used over the years to help deter crime in their cities, and I would like to see Orange do the same thing. But kudos to you still with your limitations, still being able to produce the numbers that you have produced. And of course, if you ever, and hope that this council and this city will finally get on board with you and provide you with more police officers, then, of course, the expectation would be much higher. We would expect you guys to really get the numbers very low. Because as you know, the safety of our community is one of those number-one or number-two drivers in the community that will attract people to come to our city to live. That, and, and, that and the Board of Education, our school district, those are the two biggest drivers in order to entice people to come and live with us. If people know that the city is safe, of course, they're gonna wanna come. So, that pressure falls on you guys to try to make the city of Orange much more safer so people will come. I think that's all I have right now, but thank you for all that you are doing. And I couldn't talk to you about this offline, but I'm gonna do it publicly. Since people are so concerned about our safety, how do you feel about coming before this council, maybe once a month, once every other month, and provide us with a report exactly how the police department is, 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 is how they are working, how things are going out there, so at least we can put the image out there that Orange is becoming safer?
I don't have a problem with coming before the council and speaking on anything in that vein. To give you a monthly account of what's going on in the city as far as arrests and offenses, that's relatively easy. What I would additionally like to do is bring my personnel from the Community Service Bureau to the council meeting, or set something up where issues like Ms. Easton had with the garbage can, give more tips on how to secure or what to look for, and how to help yourselves, not yourselves, but the entire community, against certain thefts or all crimes. I mean, that's something that we all can do to protect ourselves. But I'd like to do that as well as let you know what's going on.
That's, that's an excellent idea.
Because it's something as simple as, if, if, I don't know if Ms. Easton did or did not, or any other resident, you know, painting your own house number on your can, so that if we're riding down the street on High Street, and we get a call, somebody from Cleveland Street says they live at a certain number, and we see that can around the corner, you know, okay, well, at least we have you for possession of somebody else's can.
Right, right.
And that's a start.
Yeah.
And that gets us into looking into the can. But there's certain rules we have to abide by before we start to go on people's property. But I think that could be dealt with, with a survey of everyone's home. If people are interested, call us and we'll set up a survey.
I think that's an excellent idea as well. Because when you know better, you do better.
That's the plan.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Council President?
Councilwoman Corbett, as you know, we, as a council, have tried to do more with the committee reports, so if that's something you wanna add for your public safety report.
Yeah. The only, the only difference is, the report would be more verbal and it would come directly from, okay?
Exactly, yes. Council members, any more questions? Councilwoman Jones Bell?
Thank you, Council President. Should I defer to beauty before age, or what?
You can go with age.
Director Sims, now, I'm not sure if anyone actually put this call in, but this is really bad, and it's the same area, it's Thomas Boulevard. There are so many drug addicts that come to stand on the bridge now. You know, we threw away the bench.
Yes.
We tried to get rid of this stuff, and nothing works, that now, they've taken to going to the bathroom. Down there's a little hill that leads down to the creek, they go to the bathroom right there. And I heard it, and until I drove out of my lot the other morning, I saw a girl coming up from the creek button in her pants that did it for me. That was what made me tell you that we have to talk this week. It's, it's ridiculous. There is no, there is no standard, there is no, no ethics, no morals, nothing.
Are they urinating out there or doing something else?
They're doing number two.
Councilwoman Corbett? Councilwoman Jones Bell?
I just wanted to be specific.
I didn't wanna be graphic, but yes.
I don't think that's being graphic, I think that's being precise.
All of it, all of it. The smell is offensive, we know what's happening, but it's just so hard. I know we're under, you know, under man.
I think, I think that's something we could go into some kind of partnership with the county, because I believe the Aqueducts.
Lock it off, yeah.
They're, they're under the county.
Yeah.
They could erect some better fencing in that area, and then obviously, our patrolling would do something about it. I mean, I, when I'm working or if I'm off, I'll move them, because it's, you know, it's annoying to see, you know, people standing there when those that wanna catch the bus have to be.
But the bridge is about maybe thirty feet away.
But they mill in the same area. They, they walk back and forth.
They do, they do.
So, having a relative in the building there, I, I understand, because he constantly tells me about it as well.
I'm sure.
So, that is something I'll, I'll have them look at tomorrow.
'Cause it's starting to feel like, you know, we're, we're like really helpless about how far it's going. It's just, it's, they're going berserk.
Most of them are relative, residents.
Residents.
Yeah.
Well, I'm seeing a lot of strange faces.
I might have a couple, I don't know.
Might be some relatives out there, nobody's gonna deny that, but I'm seeing strange faces out there now, too, as well.
Okay.
You know, I know some live in 340, some live in 355, some live around the corner in East Orange. But then there are those faces that we have never seen, so.
It'll be addressed tomorrow.
Councilwoman Easton? Thank you. Councilwoman Easton?
Director Sims, I just wanna say, thank you for that suggestion. That was a suggestion that was made about everybody putting their numbers on their garbage cans, so that they will know where they belong. And I also just wanna say, being that we're airing this, that residents and communities, we need to be the eyes and ears for each other.
Yes.
Because police can't be everywhere, so we can help each other out by calling when we see something, and they say, you see something, say something with dial nine-one-one. But I think that's an excellent idea, because certain things people just sometimes don't pay attention to, and, but if we start putting the numbers on the garbage cans, that will make a difference. And I, and I know Councilwoman Corbett said come before each month. I would rather say quarterly, but one of the things I think you need to come before each month and say, we need more police officers.
Yeah, keep saying it.
So, each month.
I thought I was doing that.
We need more officers, we need more officers.
He is enjoying what you were saying there.
But did you do the ordering? I know he talked about another one of those, sister, wasn't that ordered with the money that we put in the budget? Did you order one?
Not for the ALPR.
No, wasn't enough?
But I'm looking at other funds for that, that may become available.
Right. And I wanna give you this, I'm not gonna read it over, but I think this is something you need to see that came from one of the residents. You might have seen it already, but I wanna give you that.
Is that it, Councilwoman Easton?
I'm done, thanks.
Director Sims?
Ma'am.
Do we have an update on the status of the manpower grant?
No, we haven't received anything as of yet from the government. I would imagine.
Oh, with the shutdown.
Everything that's going on, that's taking a slight hit.
But nobody's been awarded?
No, not as of yet.
And can you, while you're at the podium, announce your next, the public safety, the Thursday meeting, can you announce, y'all have a scheduled date?
The PCC?
Yes.
I don't have that date with me.
Okay.
But I'll find out.
Okay. And do we post that on Channel 35 when we have that, or can we do it?
We haven't this, this year, we have not.
Can you, Councilwoman Jones Bell and Councilwoman Corbett are your council liaison, so you can task one of them with that. And also, in, in a call to action, we have a health officer here, Vinnie, we have the Chair of the Housing Authority, Mr. Coram Rhimes here, and I would love, Councilwoman Jones Bell, if everybody can get together and turn to those concerns that are going over at Thomas Boulevard, and if y'all could talk about it, and then possibly, since the Housing Authority will be with us in December, when they report to us in December, they will have some definitive things that they can assist you with in getting that area taken care of.
Action.
Any more questions, council members? Thank you, Director Sims.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item three.
Best Practices.
Joyce Scarry, CFO. This year's best practices, it's the first time that the business administrator is to sign off on it, as well as the CFO. So, even more than previous years, maybe. The population of this forum was a collaboration between Ms. Cooper, Mr. Mapp, and myself, with questions being asked to the various departments as needed, and also comparison with last year's questions, where the questions were repeat questions. As it stands right now, the last answer came in just before we came upstairs. Number four is yes.
Number four has changed yes, okay.
Yeah. Number four is now populated, it's a yes, which brings our score up to thirty-six.
Council members, did you get a chance to look over the, the best practice questions?
Kinda, sorta, yeah.
You have? I emailed it out to ask you to be ready to have a discussion. I'm just gonna go to the ones particularly that I have questions, and if, I'll just start with one, two, three, four, and I know what, and you can stop me if I go past your number and just say, Councilwoman Williams. And I will start with number three, Mrs. Scarry. You answered that question yes.
Yes.
You have it in front of you?
Yes.
Is that, I'm gonna let Councilwoman, Councilwoman Ed Maribel take the lead on this, because this is something that he's been asking for, for a while, so Councilman Maribel?
Thank you, Council President. This does seem to be an annual inquiry of mine. I have yet to be provided with a copy of the policy that prohibits personal use of municipal vehicles. I've been discussing it for years now. I started that conversation, actually, with the Hawkins administration, didn't get it from them, and I'm still not aware of what it is.
Again, this is one of those questions that was asked last year. Last year's answer was also yes, and that was based on the verbiage that is in the employee handbook that states, I don't have the quote, we did just recently, you have it there, Mr. Mapp? You wanna read from it?
In the employee, in the employee handbook, section twenty-three, colon, one, dash, seven, point, nine, it says that all city vehicles are under the control of the mayor. City vehicles are to be used for official business of the city only. Cars may not be used for personal use. Personal use of city vehicle shall be caused for disciplinary action and/or removal from employment. Only authorized personnel may be transported in city vehicles, except police cars, which are used additionally for transport of injured parties and individuals suspected of or convicted of a criminal offense. Assigned drivers are responsible for ensuring that the vehicles are kept clean, in good operating condition, and are serviced in accordance with the preventative maintenance regulations established by the Departments of Public Works. Vehicles shall be utilized in accordance with prescribed energy conservation measures.
And that was the basis of our answer.
Okay. Well, it is an insufficient basis, because it seems to suggest that no one in the city uses a vehicle for commutation, for personal use. And we all know that that's not true. So, there may be something prohibiting it, but it sounds as if that the mayor has the ability to give some people permission to do otherwise. The other side of that coin is that it does not speak to the IRS at all. That policy that Mr. Mapp just read does not suggest that individuals should have added to their gross income the cost of commutation. There's nothing in that statement that speaks to that, and that's a critical piece of this, of this best practice.
It's my take on this, that if the vehicle, if there's nothing in the policy that says that you can use it for commuting, you can't use it for commuting, and therefore, there would be no provision for having a notation on your W-2 for the use of your commuting, because it's not allowed. If, if we had a policy in place that said that you could use your vehicle for commuting, then, yes, we would have to have something cleared out, spelled out clearly, that you would have to note it.
Is it the official position of the city that no employees in the city are using city vehicles for commutation?
I would not be in a position to answer that question.
Wouldn't you have to be to know whether you answered this correctly?
Exactly.
And Mr. Mapp, do you have a comment on that?
Because if someone is doing it, then there has to be a formal policy in place requiring them to comply with the IRS, the strictures of the IRS regarding gross income.
Mr. Mapp just read the clause in the employee handbook that makes it very clear, I believe, that there is no use for commuting.
Well, I, I will tell you, and, and it is somewhat secondhand, but, but I think credible. It was suggested to me that an employee of the city who had a medical procedure, drove a city vehicle to the hospital, left it there, while he went into the hospital, and it was retrieved by other employees of the city. Is that non-personal use?
I would not be in a position to judge that.
Well, my son is thirteen, he could judge that. I, I mean, I don't mean to demean you in any way, I'm just suggesting that that's as clear as the nose on your face. That's not city business. Having a medical procedure is not city business, and what I'm suggesting to you is that stuff like that, whether we sweep it under the rug, happens in Orange all the time, and everybody I'm looking at knows it. Everybody knows that.
I have no documentation to tell me that any of those things happened, so I would not be in a position to make a judgment call on that.
Well, it is somewhat biblical, seek and ye shall find. Seek and ye shall find. It is there.
Councilwoman Maribel? Just a second. Councilwoman Maribel, you finished?
I got a couple other items, but...
Could I just... Wait, just a second. Just a second, Councilwoman Mason. I'm sorry. I just want to make sure. Other items on this matter?
Other items on the list of...
Okay, but, okay. Councilwoman Mason?
Mr. Scarry, do you know who in the city has a municipal vehicle? Is there a list? Who in the city, between you and Mr. Mapp, somebody needs, should know who, what employees in the city has access to a municipal vehicle? Is there a list?
Mr. Mapp?
Council President, there is not a list that I'm aware of. However, I will act the Director of Public Works, who is responsible for the fleet, if he is aware of such a list.
Mr. Mays?
And while he's coming, let me just add a little bit more to that. Because in order for you to answer yes to that, there has to be a list of employees who are assigned a municipal vehicle, and it has to be a monitoring process. So no matter what the personnel binder says, if that doesn't exist, then that means we have not created or adopted a policy that guides those things. So it needs to be done.
Mr. Mays?
Marty Mays, the Director of Planning and Development. I absolutely agree with that. It's something that we are going to be working on. I did sit down with Mr. Mapp and joined, and we did discuss different ways that we want to go in the future in terms of creating something a little bit stronger. So I am definitely in agreement with that, and we're going to be working to put that together.
And Mr. Mays? Can I just... I'm sorry. Yes.
And so shouldn't the answer to number three be no? Because you, what happens is the same thing with my maintenance contracts for car washing and all that stuff. We've been asking for those things for months, and nothing has happened. So when you guys say you're working on it, it never comes to fruition. So working on it means what?
Well, in particular, just to touch base quickly, the car wash situation is rectified. It'd be on the next council agenda. We did go out and receive bids.
I'm just telling you. I'm just telling you. But in relationship... I'll ask you that question later. You can do that later.
In relationship to this...
But what I'm saying is with this one, this question has been coming up every single year. Every single year. By now, there should be a process in place.
Mr. Mays? Can I ask, and Councilwoman Maribel, if you don't mind? If, again, Councilwoman Maribel has been asking this question prior to you returning. If you can set up a meeting with Councilwoman Maribel and our Legislative Research Officer, we can draft an ordinance to have this codified so that we can move this forward. But I would think, and we can have this discussion, Mr. Mapp, but I would think that the answer should be no because we do have employees that commute personally back and forth. And as a result of that, we do not, and we have not required, I think, Mr. Maribel, Councilwoman Maribel, I'm sorry, answered that question several years ago, and he got one response from Mr. Mason in writing that he actually does it not as a, not as a bump. It's mandatory via the city's policies, but he does it because he knows, he did it because he knew it was the right thing to do. So I don't know if in wholeness or apart, if you answered it because we partially do this, but I would think it's a no, but you would better know. Councilwoman Maribel?
Well, I'm still shocked that we don't have a list of who has a vehicle. That's, I don't want to meet with anyone who hasn't complied a list of who has a vehicle.
Well, can we, we can have some earmarks that we say at this meeting, please bring 1, 2, and 3 so we can move forward, and we won't be in the same place next year.
Well, the bottom line for this is that this is a best practice because the use of vehicles, the use of gasoline in particular, but the cost of repairs, the wear and tear, the depreciation of the vehicles, potentially even the cost of tolls and the like, it costs a city money. And it's not a best practice if we're just letting the money flow out freely without any oversight. Mr. Scarry, number six.
Councilwoman Maribel, let me, because I just don't, I just want to make sure. That's what I was going to say.
Oh, you just want to go 1 through 4?
No, no. I just want to, I would say, I'm sorry, before you get to number six, number four. Number five.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
For number three, can we put a timeframe around that? I think we need to start putting timeframes when those things should be completed. Because we got to have a goal to work toward, and it should be as soon as possible. So we need to put a timeline on that.
The number three, I don't think that should take more than a week.
Let me, well, we've tasked, there's a couple of things, getting a list together, then Councilwoman Maribel writing up, along with Legislative Research Officer, writing up the ordinance. If we can report back to you, how long do you think, Councilwoman, Mr. Mays, how long would it take you to get the list together?
It should be a priority.
One day?
Yeah, you know, a week, a couple days.
Okay, so if you get the list together a week from today, which is next Tuesday, and then Councilwoman Maribel, can you meet prior to, and just have an update prior to the next meeting?
I'd be happy to.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Williams?
Councilwoman...
Could I just say to Mr. Marty Mays that when you put that list together, one of the other things you need to include, when that vehicle is supposed to be not in use, you need to put the location where it can be found.
We need a tracking...
So we need to audit that. We can go there and look and find it there at 5:00 or 4:30.
I think, he talked about a tracking system device that we spoke, you spoke about.
Yeah, we do, we do have a tracking system, but they're mostly on the Public Works vehicles and not some of the other ones we talked about.
Councilman Corbett?
In that, in that list, I would also like to see the positions within City Hall that actually requires a vehicle.
It's not just City Hall, Councilman Corbett.
That's my point. City Hall and other places.
You said you want to see the list within City Hall. I'm saying there are vehicles citywide. Some people don't work in City Hall.
Okay.
Moving on to number five, Mr. Mapp. I believe that answer is yes. Councilman Corbett? Councilman Corbett?
It should be put in City Hall. We just have to watch it.
Excuse me, Councilman Corbett?
I'm sorry.
Number five?
Sidebar. Sorry about that.
The administration put no for number five, and I believe the answer is number five, yes.
That answer should certainly be number yes.
Yes.
Maybe about three years ago, we put an ordinance in place around pay-to-play. Certainly, $300 is the resolution. Certainly surrounding the $300 limit. So that should be yes.
Councilman Corbett, if I may?
Just a second.
It should be yes.
Councilwoman Maribel?
I think the question is, have we adopted one that is more restrictive than the state? And the answer to that is no.
Right. Ours is the same as the state.
Exceeding 300 and up to...
So we did not make it more restrictive.
The last line of that question is the operative part.
Okay.
Okay. All right, well, we need to revisit that.
Should have made it 299.
94, Councilman Corbett, will you take that on?
Yes, I will. Mr. Harris?
Councilman Corbett.
Can you look into that, pull that original and change it so that we can actually have it more restrictive than the state statute?
Moving right along, Councilwoman Maribel, number six?
Yes, number six, Mr. Scarry speaks to an up-to-date website. Is it? And it sounds like there are more eyes on this now than there had been in the past. Does anyone actually look at the Orange website to ask whether there are the past three years adopted budgets on the site? In other words, do you actually look at the site to determine whether that's true or false?
Mr. Mapp? Chief, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Maribel, should defer into Mr. Mapp.
We did look at the site, and there are several years that are maintained on the site. We've also provided to the person who maintains our website to provide some additional updates on the website. And so we would expect that by this evening that those additional updates will be on there.
Okay, because I couldn't find them. I did find amended budgets. I did find proposed budgets, but it speaks to the past three years adopted budgets. And I don't believe that's on the website currently. If you're suggesting it will be tomorrow, I hope that's true.
The adopted budget, our counselor, is on there. What we are adding before this evening is out is the annual debt statement, the annual financial statement, as well as the 2012 audit report.
Then I think you're missing my point. It says, is there currently on the site the past three years adopted budgets?
That's correct.
And you're saying they are?
Yes.
I can't find it. And finally, oh, I'm sorry. You want to keep going?
Are you on number six? Are you finished with number six?
There's a lot of these.
Okay. And now, my next one, oh, you said you're finished with number six?
I am.
Number nine. My, and I, this question will come up to you several times, Mr. Mapp, because my concern when it asks, the concern that I have when it asks questions pertaining to our collective bargaining agreements, are you aware that most of our agreements are outdated, that we have not negotiated contracts in up to five years on several of our collective bargaining agreements?
I am aware that the collective bargaining agreements are out of date, and for the most part, we're operating on the memorandums of understanding, and we're also actually in the negotiation process.
And just so this will save time going forward, who are you in negotiating process with?
I will check with Labor Council, but I do know that there have been negotiations with the, with the PBA, with the FOA, as well as with, I believe it's the FMBA, a number of the public safety unions.
Okay. And what is, and would you rather me just ask Mr. Smith these questions?
We don't have a current status to give to you. All I can tell you is that we are in negotiations.
And where are you at with Omeva? Omeva?
In the sense of?
To bring in their contract up to date.
I will speak to Labor Council.
You'll speak to Labor Council. Moving on to number 11. An accounting policy manual documenting all internal accounting control process. Can, and you said yes to that?
Mm-hmm.
Can we see, can the council have a copy of that? Can we have a copy? And can you email that?
Councilwoman Mason? You skipped number 10.
Oh, because I was just, I'm saying, stop me if I go by, Council, number 10?
I want to know, when is the last time our CFO has discussed any of that with us? Did I miss something because I wasn't...
Mrs. Scarry, number 10.
Even though the question specifies the CFO speaking with the council, this has been an item of discussion from your, from the auditor, from the budget consultant, from Mr. Mapp, from John Datinia. It's not...
Mrs. Scarry does say, does your CFO...
I know. It says that.
Okay.
I think based on the fact that the discussions have been held, we can still say yes, and I was behind it.
And since the best practice is an annual document?
Mm-hmm.
Have you done it in this calendar year?
May I just jump in? There have been discussions concerning the audit findings, which, based on the severity of those findings, could put us at risk. And so those discussions did occur. And the CFO was a part of those discussions, the auditor was a part of those discussions. Based on the audit results from the year 2012, those conversations have occurred. We've also discussed the audit with the Finance Committee and the findings.
Mr. Mapp, I'm on the Finance Committee. We have not discussed the audit findings with the Finance Committee. Okay, but it says with the governing body or subcommittee, but we have not had an agenda regarding the audit with, I know councilmembers have actually met and had discussions, but not with the administration in this calendar year. So do you recall when that meeting, when you had those discussions?
I attended several of the Finance Committee meetings. I'm not a president, and I can't give you a specific date, but it's being subsequent to the audit.
And we talked about the audit. Councilwoman Jones-Bell, do you recall that?
I have no recollection.
So number 11, again.
Shouldn't that be no?
Councilwoman Mason?
Shouldn't that be no? It should be. Mrs. Scarry, shouldn't that be no? And what did you do with number 11? You left it alone?
She's going to, no, she's going to provide, Mrs. Scarry will provide the council with that policy. Moving on, just, Mr. Mapp, number 16, just in your comments, just a spelling error under its own responsibility. Did you see that? Number 16 in your comment. And also, Mrs. Scarry.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Nevermind.
There's an A, and there should be an S. Our responsibility?
Yes. Moving on, I'm up to 20. If anybody wants to stop before we get to 20. The answer to this was yes. And the question, which I underlined, was a formal policy regarding surplus serves as a basis for decisions concerning future response, future financial solvency, and the lack of policy could lead bond rating agencies to downgrade your municipality's credit rating. This policy, can we have a copy of that?
Council President, we can provide you with the trend analysis on unbalance, which covers a five-year period.
It's, but the answer is their formal policy, and that's what, so is there a policy that you have internally?
Our trend analysis is the policy that we use to help us predict and plan.
Just as a, just as a...
20.
This matter of clarification. The ending statement for number 20 is, does your municipality have a written policy goal for the amount of surplus available in support of municipal operations? And is this goal evaluated annually?
I will provide you with it, and you will see.
Okay. And what I will say, and Mr. Mapp, you and I had a brief discussion on this. Part of the concern is that this, I believe best practices was created so that there is an engagement process that all parties who are making decisions that both areas, if you will, of the government are engaged in the checks and balances of working. And it's not for us to do on a night of the eve of best practices being handed in. And clearly, if we're up here doing this, it's because this information, if you have it, it hasn't been shared. And I think one thing that helps a policy, and in being more, to be noted and more transparent, is possibly policies of this sort, perhaps codifying them by way of ordinance. Number 23. You answered yes to this question? Mrs. Scarry, that's, you know, that is not a consistent, the only time, unfortunately, that this council gets reports is when we ask for it.
Council President?
Mr. Mapp?
That is absolutely false. The council receives financial reports each and every month.
Who gets them?
Well, we receive something, I believe, I believe in August.
And today?
And we just received something today for September.
I have copies of the emails. I send them by email so that there's a record.
Who does he send them to?
I can provide those copies to you at any time.
Who do you send them to, Mr. Mapp? Who do you send them to, Mr. Map?
They're sent to the clerk's office.
And I guess then my next question would be, why no standard practice? As today, you sent it out to all the council members, and then other times, I'm assuming you just sent it to the clerk. Why is there no standard, and which format you're doing it?
I sent them to the clerk, who I believe informed me today that she did forward them to the council. My policy is to make sure there's a record and to provide them to the council through the clerk's office.
And also, also, Mr. Map, the Finance Committee did have a discussion in terms of the reports, and we asked for a simplified, those are more detailed reports, and we asked and discussed a simplified report. Have your office made any attempts to simplify?
I'm not sure about the request for a simplified report. What I can say to you is that one of the reports that you get is a budget status report that is a summary that gives you every department that is funded within the city. It gives you the budget, how much was spent, and what is the balance. That is as simple as it gets.
Okay, well, I'm going to show you exactly via an Excel sheet what we were requesting. You'll see.
Okay.
Moving on to 20... This question was answered...
Twenty-three should be no.
Twenty-six.
Speak, don't interrupt her now before she gets to 26. Counsel President.
Counselor Corvus? Twenty-three should be no.
Count 26 should be no.
Twenty-three should be no.
No, I just have to clarify the council file.
That's not even the point.
Okay.
Is it, we correspond to the annual adopted budget?
Yes.
We adopted, we adopted a budget that has not been followed at all. So, how can that be yes?
Well, this is just speaking to the reports, and so that's what we have to do.
But it said it, you see, as quoted on all budget revenues, appropriate as they correspond to the annual adopted budget.
Yes. And in response, Counsel President, to Counselor Easton, the reports that you provided, one of those reports does give each amount that had been budgeted against each of the respective departments. So, if five million was budgeted for police, you see in the budget column, five million. You see in the amount appropriated, two million. You see the amount that is balanced, three million. It corresponds to the adopted budget.
I still say the answer should be no.
And we have some follow-up that the clerk's office is going to see if they have...
Until we get that, that answer should be no.
Okay. Mrs. Gary, number 26, you answered yes to that question. When was the trust fund created? Mr. Map?
I will ask Ms. Les Gary to answer that. She showed me that we do have a trust fund for snow removal.
We've had a dedication by writer for the trust, the snow removal for a while. I thought, either that or it started this year.
Mr. Maze, I see, are you saying yes? Mr. Maze, can you come? Because are you saying yes? Are you just, okay, never, okay, never mind. I know in the previous meeting, we had discussed several trust accounts at the budget meetings. At that time, it was asked, but it was not stated that we had it and said we could do it, so just need clarification on that, please.
I'll double-check on it.
Twenty-seven, you said yes to this?
Yes, we answered that question as yes, and it raises what has been a concern for us, and something that I think the governing body needs to take some action on. That is in your handbook, in the city's employee handbook. It lists, the definition of a full-time employee is listed as a minimum of 20 hours. We believe, and we will strongly urge the governing body to amend that, to bring it in compliance with the state's health reform that went into effect two or three years ago, where a full-time employee is defined as an employee who works a minimum of 25 hours. In most municipalities, it is set at 35, but the governing body has to, by legislation, determine what constitutes a full-time employee, and it cannot be less than 25 hours for the purpose of health benefits.
But if you, if it's not in compliance, Mr. Map, why do we say yes to it? I mean, to me, what you're just saying is that that's a goal we need to work towards. It's not something that we're doing currently, so why would you answer a yes?
Because it is based on the employee handbook, and part-time employees do not get health benefits.
There's a two-part to that question. I think that we need to have a discussion simply on that and have that legislation and look at.
And there are some elected officials who've been grandfathered in under the statute.
Okay. In the states, you're saying in the states or the cities?
In the city of Orange and in the state of New Jersey, those who were in the system prior to the reform have been grandfathered in.
And 28, we do a monthly review? Mrs. Gary?
Mr. Map, does that?
Yes, we work, myself and our HR person, we do look at the bills on a monthly basis.
Regarding 31, Mr. Map, just as, as of October 1st, with the Affordable Healthcare Act, what we require, I think the state health meets the requirement of the Health Affordable Care Act, do we have to send notice out to all the employees, and did we?
We did send something with the pay stubs last pay period. I believe that was open enrollment. I don't think it has to do, it has to do with the Affordable Care Act.
Saying that we were in compliance and not what people had to do, we didn't?
We did send a notice out, not pertaining to the, to the healthcare act, but we did send a notice out with the last paycheck pertaining to open enrollment.
On number 35, you answered, not applicable. And number 36, you answered yes, and where is that located?
I believe that should be in the clerk's office.
No, this is either internet posting or onsite review, so you believe, I'm sorry, Mr. Map?
The reason this is yes is that we do make available, through our budget process, the salary enragers for all departments.
And this is, well, here's, I think, I don't know, there's a municipality in South Jersey that actually has a very interactive website, and you can just type in Donna K. Williams, and it shows exactly.
And actually, you can do that.
Through the state's website.
Yeah.
They're asking for our website.
But this doesn't ask for individual salaries.
Counselwoman Williams?
Counselwoman Easton?
I guess I'm a little confused.
Where we are?
We've been asking for that since July of last year. We still don't have current salaries, so where is that listed? Everything we get has got a different number for each personnel's salary, so, Mr. Map, I want to know where the accurate information is, because I have not seen it in a year.
Counsel President, my response was based on the question that was asked in item number 36, and I say...
Well, let me ask the question I want to know. Where is it posted and that is accurate, that shows on the payroll records?
If you look in the budget, Counsel President, Counselor Easton...
We looked in the budget, half of the salaries were not current.
Let me just clarify, Mr. Map, when we were going through the budget process, many, remember, we have introduced budget, many of the salaries were not correct, and after the budget was adopted, we were not given a adopted sheet showing the correct salaries. And this question asked actually for a three-year period, so that you can see calendar year 2011, 2012, and 2013. And I, and actually, and actually, one of the things, just as a matter to note, in our previous budgets, you were kind of see last year, this year, and the, and the budgets have been amended just as we show the year that's being introduced, but the question asked for, I guess, a more transparent, where can the public go and see? And then again, if you're saying that the public has to come to the clerk's office to get a budget, that that budget is not...
It is posted online, actually.
But again, with all the corrections and amendments?
No, no. The budget with the salaries is posted online. This question, we may have a difference of opinion in terms of what this question is asking.
No, 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 the question that Counselwoman Easton just asked, that's why I'm clarifying, that there were many mistakes in the salaries.
Counselwoman Williams, that answer should be no, a flat no, because you have not provided it. And don't keep telling me about the budget, because this doesn't mention one thing about it being in the budget. Does your municipality make available to the public, free of charge, either through an internet posting or onsite review, documents, not a budget, documents, that show current salaries of all personnel, and additional documents, not budget, that would allow the public to review how your municipality's salaries have changed over a three-year period? The answer should be no.
We say the answer is yes.
Counsel President, if I may.
Counselwoman Marable?
The budget is a document, but I do agree with you, Counselwoman Easton. Mr. Map, you go ahead. I'll talk about you in your absence. Mr. Map, if you were here, would recall that I emailed him, we exchanged several emails. I asked for this particular salary of a particular employee, and his consistent response to me was, go see the mayor. He wouldn't tell me when I asked him, much less tell me, go see that document, or go see a particular, you know, place that it was free and available. He said, go see the mayor, I'm not going to tell you. So, I think that answers the question.
I don't think it was...
Right, and also, we, that same question was asked during our budget hearings, and no one could give us an answer on that.
Well, that was the context within which I wasn't asking, because I was curious. I wasn't asking because I was nosy. I was asking because it had budget implications, and he wouldn't answer it.
Right.
And also, so that answer should be no. I got no one there. Mrs. Smith, if you recall, we re-repeated a report of all salaries, and it was to be segregated by seasonal versus permanent. Have you received that office of the clerk's, have you received that report to the clerk's office to date?
No, I have not.
Okay. So, that answer should, will be changed to no. Mrs. Gary, number 36, 37, I'm sorry.
Counsel President, just a point of what, I think it's fair to say we're recommending the answer be changed to no. I don't think, we're not signing off on this, we don't have the authority to change it, but I do understand what you're saying.
Thank you for that clarification. Number 37. Mrs. Gary, this answer is yes, and I will tell you personally, this has been a pet peeve of mine. I know, actually, when we got the Edison system, and we had a presentation, one of the questions that I asked the presenters from Edison was, can we get a time management software? And I believe his answer was, they, they don't have the time management, however, you can get another program, and there, it can integrate. To date, some offices are doing, everybody's pretty much doing a handwritten in and out, and I believe that one of the problems during the change of administration, and one, when we had enormous checks that were going out to people, was attributed to time management, that if there's nobody being able to look at how much time is being utilized in a year, who's managing it, can we look at it any day? We, I asked Mr. Map several months ago, and he said that you, the administration was talking to different vendors about time management, but I don't think it has been implemented. But I think the time management is not consistent throughout the city, and it's a very sore, it's a, it's a problem, and that's where, you know, you have the change of administration, and nobody can clarify who has what, and, you know, and I actually recall, you know, just sitting here, talking to a member, one of the directors in the past, and asking, what was their time? And that person said that they did not know their own time, and that they looked at somebody else to keep their time. So, I'm just curious how you got to the answer of yes.
Do we have record-keeping? Yes. Is it adequate? No.
Okay.
We did go out for bid for a new payroll that would include time management, and we will be presenting that to the council soon.
And what's the timeframe of the presentation?
Mr. Map will be putting that on, so I don't know exactly.
Counselwoman Williams?
I meant to say the answer to that should be no. Have you seen a time card in the last 10 years?
No.
Or electronic timekeeping in the last 10 years? Or have you been able to get a clear answer as to how many vacation days someone has used and not used in the last 10 years? So, I don't know where the yes comes from. There has been...
There is record-keeping, but I will admit that it's inadequate, and that's why we're moving to find something that's much better. But there is record-keeping.
Supervisors are reviewing and approving denied and voided time attendances.
They are.
Based on their own personal relationships, not on business relationships.
I can't answer for that.
So, I'm saying that answer should be no.
Clearly noted.
Excuse me, Counsel President.
Counselwoman Jonesville?
It does say such as time cards, electronic timekeeping, because what Counselwoman Easton just said is very accurate. If it's not an electronic clock or a time card, how do we know?
It's a handwritten record. Those are examples, not limited only to those two potential methods of using. That's an example.
That's subjective.
It's a little subjective, I agree. So, your opinion is noted.
So, recommendation for 37 is no.
I had a question about 39.
Counselwoman Marable, 39?
Mrs. Gary, obviously, there was a point in time where there was an effective date of a limitation, limitation policy regarding accrued vacation time. Do you know what that effective date was?
It's different by the different contracts. You really have to look at each contract to find exactly what applies to that particular person at that time.
Is everyone employed by the city under one of those types of contracts?
Those who, I think that there are people who are not under a contract, in which case they would follow the Omea contract, I believe.
So, let's take, I don't know, position, chief of staff, business administrator, acting business administrator, is there a date certain after which those types of positions should not be able to carry more than a year's vacation time forward?
I don't think, I don't think you can carry... I'm not 100% sure, certain, but I know that you can't carry your full year over to the second year.
Well, it says no more than the amount earned the previous year, so to me, that means whatever you earned the previous year, you can carry over that as a maximum, but not more than that.
Yeah, that's, yeah, at least, but I think it's actually smaller, I think it's actually smaller than that. I don't think you can carry over the full year, but...
But the clear goal of this is to prevent people from retiring and cashing in hundreds of vacation days for tens of thousands of dollars. It doesn't have to happen in the next day or two, or even in the next week. Is it possible that we could get kind of an itemization of who falls into what category in terms of that line in the sand, that effective date?
Well, that would entail finding out who's under what contract, which contract, an addendum, or...
Well, not by person, but by grouping. In other words, if there are individuals covered by a particular contract... In other words, if there are individuals covered by a particular contract, I'm assuming the limitation date applies to all of them?
Yes, yes.
I, I don't want it individualized, but if there are people who don't fall under any of that, I, I would be interested-
Anybody who doesn't fall under an existing contract. I think that the policy in the town, I'm not sure if it's a policy or exactly how it's written, falls under the Omeba. Or if they, if they have an individual contract.
No, no. You're saying, I'm sorry, you're saying non-represented members have, have an individual contract?
There are a few cases, yes.
And who are those contracts? How did, who did the administration, they entered, the administration, you're saying the administration entered into a contract with personnel?
Talking of, in this case specifically, about someone who is above the highest rank.
You're talking about uniformed who?
Above, above, above the, is it the SOA?
Okay, so you're talking about, okay, contractual member stuff. It's still contractual, I thought you were talking about like directors or something.
Uh-uh, no.
So, I, I, I don't want to ask for too much too soon, but again, is it possible to get something like that in the reasonable foreseeable future, like within the next thirty days? Is that?
You want to know exactly where the parameters are at on each contract?
Unless an individual does not fall within a contract, I want to confirm that you're saying Omeba applies to, to everyone who doesn't fall under a contract. What I'm trying to prevent is someone retiring and us not knowing that that person should not have been carrying all this over for years, because it's a hard-
I don't think, I don't think that there's anybody, there's, there's nobody who can carry more than-
Here's my concern, and this harkens back to the prior question about timekeeping. During the budget process, we were asked to fund a personnel person. Someone who would, and I think, I recall you clearly saying, "No one's doing that now."
Yeah, but it's, it's pretty difficult to pull all the information together, to tell you the truth.
But guess what? It's within the job description of the business administrator to do it. Historically, it has been the function of that position. So if we're saying no one's doing it, we're assuming it's not being accurately kept, and if there's no one minding the mint, I think it's a very compelling argument ten years down the road to say, "You owe me all this money." And I don't want to get to that point to find out what we should have known in 2012, or thirteen, rather. So, so again, you know, if, if thirty days is unreasonable, I, I'd wait sixty days for it, as long as it's accurate and we can kind of get a handle on-
Could you do me a huge favor?
You want me to send you a memo?
And send, send me an email outlining exactly what it is that you want, so that I can know that I'm finding the right information for you.
Okay, I'd appreciate that.
Mrs. Scarry, and kind of, because we keep talking about contracts, and I stated it earlier, one of the audit notes is that our contracts are not available. So for the five collective bargaining agreements that represent our employees, can you provide each of those contracts that the administration is currently abiding by to the clerk's office?
So many of those contracts are not only reliant upon the expired contracts-
No, that's what I'm saying.
But also all of the memorandums of agreement and understanding that follow behind them, and it's like a maze. I think, Mr. Smith, you have them all in your office, don't you? You have all of them?
Well, here's, Attorney Smith, within two weeks, can you get to the clerk's office, whatever contract, for instance, if we're talking about the PBA, their current contract, if it's outdated, the current, that last contract that was agreed to, and the, any memorandums of agreement that are currently being abided by, can you get all five of those contracts to the clerk's office, so the clerk, so it could be distributed to all the council members?
Yes.
Okay, within two weeks, thank you. Number-
We discuss an effective session, I-
No, it's not just, we just, if we need to discuss it, we'll discuss, well, we just want a copy in the clerk's office, so we can all have it, because that's one of the things in audit that they cannot put their hands on, so we want that. Regarding forty-seven, it says, "Has your municipality," this is basically talking about the master planning zoning ordinances. It says, it says, "Your response is that the recommendations have been submitted to the committee." What committee?
Zoning Committee.
Zoning Board or zoning committee?
I believe it's the zoning, which one is it, Adrian?
Forty-seven.
Keisha said this one.
We've been informed that there are changes that are in the works for the master plan, and that those changes are pending, they have been submitted, but pending. So that's the reason we answered prospectively.
I got, I, I understand that. It says it's been submitted to the committee. My question is, what committee?
We'll get the answer and get back to you.
Okay. Let's see, forty-eight is crazy. Okay. And I believe, are there any more questions, council members? Mr. Map, you have to, it was your intention, or it is your intention, to send this to the state tomorrow?
That is correct, Council President, and the reason for that. We do have the local finance notice, which provides the rules as far as this is concerned. And it requires that we fill out this best practice document, and that it be discussed with the governing body. And I can provide copies of that local finance notice that tells you what the responsibility is of the governing body.
No, it's, it's actually on the last page. So, can you send the final, prior to sending it out tomorrow? Can you send the final document to the clerk for distribution to council members tomorrow, prior to sending it out?
We can do that, but we will be sending the document out tomorrow.
But my question is, prior to you sending it out tomorrow, can you send the final document to the clerk for distribution?
We can certainly do that. We will take everything that we heard here this evening into consideration, but it is not a document that we have to be in agreement on in terms of what the council thinks is a yes versus a no.
But here's the thing, Mr. Map, you have three sign-offs. You have the Chief, the Chief Financial Officer Municipal Clerk certification. Prior to the municipal clerk's sign-off, can you send it to the city council for distribution?
Can I say yes, we can do that?
Okay, thank you. Council members, any other questions? Thank you, Mrs. Scarry.
Councilwoman Williams, so once you get it, are you going to give the direction to Madeline, whether she should sign it or not sign it, based on the recommendations that we made tonight?
What I will do is, Mr. Map, is, can I assume that we'll have the document by ten o'clock tomorrow morning?
We can certainly have it to you by that time.
Okay. Council members, I would ask that you pay attention to your email, and if, Ms. Smith will send it to me by ten, and will send it to all council members as soon as she gets it. And if there's any requests of Mr. Map, can you send it to him immediately with a goal of sending it out by 2:00 PM tomorrow?
I should point out to you that there is no certification needed by the municipal clerk.
I'm looking at it. There are three certifications on here. There's a Chief Administrative Office certification, Chief CFO, and there's three sign-offs, and a municipal clerk certification.
It says there is no separate certification submission for the municipal clerk this year.
Okay. So am I looking at a different document?
Are you looking at a local finance notice?
I'm looking at the document with the certifications.
Okay. This is the local finance notice that provides the guidance, that provides the rules.
But this is the document that you have to submit, Mr. Map, and this is- Okay, and so, is that, is that something that you can agree to, that we send it out? And if we have any recommendations after we review it, we'll send it directly to you, and that you can send it out at two o'clock tomorrow?
Council President, we have listened to everything the governing body has stated here this evening.
Mr. Map, I'm not asking, I'm asking you for tomorrow. You will send it out to the, to the council at 10:00 AM. The council will review it and have their requests, suggestions, questions to you by noon tomorrow. Is that okay?
I will check with the CFO. If that is within the deadline that we have, I will certainly oblige, but we must meet the deadline.
Does she leave? Does Mrs. Scarry leave? Mrs. Scarry, can you possibly review and see if two o'clock tomorrow is within the timeframe that you can send it?
We will ask the state.
You can, there's nowhere, you can review it right now?
We got an extension to be able to deliver it tomorrow. We'll ask the state if that's feasible to them.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Williams?
Councilwoman Easton?
There is a municipal clerk certification.
I see it.
So it has to be included, no matter-
I see it.
We're looking at it in black and white, so that should be part of the certification, because she has to certify that we discussed it.
I see it.
Council President?
Councilman Corbett?
I made a request to see a listing of all vehicles or all positions that require the use of a vehicle in City Hall. When I said City Hall, I meant the administration period, inside of City Hall and outside of City Hall. So I would like to see a listing of all city employees that require a use of a city, a city vehicle. And how soon can I get it? How soon can the council get it?
Councilman Corbett, we actually did a, Mr. May's will have it to Councilwoman Marable by next week, and then Councilwoman Marable will report back to us with the suggested ordinance and, so what's going to start the ordinance process, is him receiving that list by next Tuesday?
Okay. All right, thank you.
Moving on to resolutions and ordinances, council members, are there any resolution and or ordinances that you would like to discuss?
Council President?
Councilman Corbett?
I actually have two. First one is an ordinance, forty-five dash two thousand thirteen, an ordinance to amend Chapter fifteen alcoholic beverages for the code of the City of Orange Township, requiring the use of security cameras outside alcoholic beverages, beverage establishments. My question is, um-
Forty-five, forty-five dash twenty thirteen.
I'm assuming that the owners of the beverage establishment has to pay for these cameras?
Yes.
So my question really is, whether they consult it?
Um, yes, actually, the ABC Board had a meeting September fourteenth with the pub, with the ABC owners. Notice went out to ABC owners. Several of them attended, it was a healthy discussion, so yes, they were.
Thank you. Uh, the other one is a resolution.
Before you move to that one?
Forty-five, I, I just would like, and I don't know if that was an oversight, in the second parallel, shouldn't it say where's the mayor, the police director, the chairman of the Alcohol Beverage Control Board of Orange, and the Orange City Council?
Can we, do we have an extra copy of forty-five dash twenty thirteen? Ms. Smith, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, can you give that to Chairman Ross, please? So we can go over this together? I think so. Also, do you have a copy of it, Mr. Harris in front of you? In that title, while, to add to what Councilwoman Easton just said, it should say cameras outside and inside of ABC establishment, except where an exception has been given. This is the first reading, so can we, we can definitely add that now, correct? So outside and inside ABC establishments, except where an exception has been given.
Council President, I don't see the words outside and inside.
That's what I'm saying. Can we modify it to add it? The man's gonna be added.
Yes.
Replacing what, though?
Where you add-
Adding, it's, security cameras outside alcohol beverage establishment. So I'm at, I'm suggesting that we add outside and inside ABC establishments- with the exception of those that have been granted an exception. So I'm adding.
Which, which paragraph are you in?
I'm at the heading.
Oh, the title?
Yes, that's where I'm starting, at the title.
But if the title says outside and inside, and the body of it says entrances and exits-
That's where I'm starting, if we can-
Okay.
Well, it should flow through the, and then-
And that's where I was, if we can mark this up, so for the second reading, that'll be correct. But that's what the intent was.
And include the-
I'm sorry.
Board of Orange and the Orange City Council-
Right.
Has, have approved the use of secured cameras, and then whatever beverage goes after that.
So the governing body has to be at-
Where is that?
Doesn't, um, paragraph, the second whereas, the governing body needs to be added to that? And if, Mr. Harris, if that, throughout the document, if it can flow with the outside, inside ABC establishment, with the exception of those that have been given exception, throughout the document, you understand? Like, for instance, item three only says outside, so that needs to be updated.
Council, if I may, here's the problem with that. Whoever drafted this, it says entrance, exit, and the front- I'm in section fifty-one dash twenty-six, but the, under, now therefore be resolved. Entrances, exits, and front perimeter. It seems somewhat open whether entrance is outside looking in, or inside looking out, but clearly, the intent was the entrance, and the front perimeter, which means basically the, the, the front fascia of, of the building. But if, if, if you're adding additional cameras, you could be requiring as many as five cameras in, in these places. And I did the math, this notion of ninety, keeping it for ninety days, if you have just three cameras, that's two hundred and seventy days worth of video. You know, at some point, it becomes onerous to ask these people, I mean, I, my concern about this is we might put people out of business. So I think we have to be judicious in the number, I'm not really a real enthusiastic about this, but you, you can't put people out of business to protect people.
Director, I just want to ask Director Sims, one more, Director Sims?
Uh, Councilwoman Williams, while he's coming, Councilwoman Marable's concerned about the tape, but the tape will only be utilized if there's something happens. That's the only time they review the tape.
Well, he said ninety days, and my question-
Each one will be kept for ninety days. You multiply that times the number of cameras, that's the number of days you have to hold on to at any one time.
Director Sims, so if I'm looking at a camera, and most of the cameras are on the screen, and it shows six views, are those six different tapes?
Well, that's one thing you have to, we have to come forward a little bit. They're not tapes anymore.
Okay.
They're, they're going to be digital, digitally recorded, and that doesn't take much space at all. So, if, if it's going to be a ninety-day loop that they are saving images, that, that should not be much of a problem. You'd put all of that on one little flash drive, but-
Per camera?
No, all of them. You can put all of it on a flash drive, it doesn't take up much space at all. It just depends on what kind of camera, how expensive the equipment is, that the, that the shop or the, the establishment purchases.
And I know cameras could be anywhere from like ninety dollars or whatever today, but that's what I wanted to clarify, because I've seen where they have the six different views, and you go in and-
It could be, it could all be on one program to see all of them, and actually, it's not going to take up much space on a computer, but again, to, to the councilman's credit, he is identifying that it could be an expense, but that depends on the equipment that they purchase. And I, I can't really answer how long they can load some of this information, but it depends on what they purchase.
I, I just did a little extra math. If, if it's two hundred and seventy days worth, that's six thousand four hundred and eighty hours worth of video. That's not my flash drive. I don't know what kind of technology you've got.
You're a terabyte, it's going to hold a lot, you know? There's a lot of information that could be held. And it's compressed, it's not, you know, the full images are to be compressed over time. But again, it depends on the equipment that they purchase.
Council members, one of the things that was discussed at the meeting also was, and perhaps-
Was it that six AM meeting, or whatever it was, crazy? Then why did nobody came?
It was that, people did come, it was eight AM meeting. And one of the problems that we had was that- And one of the problems that we had was that a lot of our establishments owner operated, so if you have it during business hours, they're not going to come. But one of the things, if we, Chairman Ross, if you could come, if you could come, one of the discussions we asked was the establishment owners, if, well, many of them had cameras, first of all. Out of the forty-one AB licenses...
Commissioner Ross, we have forty-one licenses in the city. Thirty of the licenses have cameras already. The other licenses, two of them don't have license. The other, the other ones out of the forty-one are pocket licenses, where they're not existing. There's two closed businesses, and one is temporary closed, and three other businesses, we was unable to determine whether they had cameras at this particular search. But thirty of them already have cameras.
And how many would not be applicable, because they're not operational at this time?
Ten.
So one, thirty, okay.
Council President, can I, by cameras, do you mean a minimum of a camera?
No, they have cameras inside and outside, so they have more than one camera.
Each camera gets more than one view?
I'm not sure how that, how it works.
So this, so this ordinance is pretty much in, being put in place for those that will be opening after the fact, those who are not established already?
Well, and the two that do not have cameras that are in operation now.
So how much time are you giving them before you start slapping them with a five?
That's up in the air. We ask them to come before the board, and we will give them as much time as they possibly need.
Council President, my reading of this is that every establishment has to have at least three cameras.
They have to have cameras that shows what goes on inside and outside.
That's not what this says.
Well, that's what I talked to the council president about amended this, because that was the intent, that they have cameras inside and outside.
Okay. Now I understand the change to outside, inside, because that's not, this requires a minimum of three cameras. Front door, back door, and front of the establishment.
And also, there was a discussion, if the ABC license holders wanted, that we, you know, that they can do it collectively as well, that would help as well. So there was a consideration of course. So the changes, can we do the markup? And what is the suggestion, Mr. Smith?
It would be a motion to...
What, I'm sorry, I was, to Attorney Smith, I'm sorry. Attorney Smith, I'm sorry, what's the suggestion?
Well, it just can't be amended, they'll take a bank and special research officer. Change from next question.
Brian, any more questions, council? Councilwoman Corbett, your next one?
Next one is Resolution 337 dash 2013, a resolution authorizing the City of Orange Township to transfer funds from the Community Development Block Grant Program Year 2020 to the Community Block, or Community Development Block Grant Program Year 2012. And as I read through this one, it says that you're going to be taking funds from the project known as Colgate Park remediation, and you're going to add it to the High and Alden Street project, Park Project. My question is, how long have you had this money for the Colgate Park?
Mr. Mays?
Marty Mays, Director of Planning and DPW. I'm not exactly sure how long they had the money for Colgate Park, because it predates me, I'm assuming, maybe a year or two?
So you really don't know that those money was specifically earmarked for any particular project? The reason I ask, of course, is because of the issues that we had with Colgate Park this past summer. And if money was available, you know, I don't understand why those needs weren't addressed concerning Colgate Park.
Well, not to try to make the story short, is that if you look at Colgate Park, there's a part that is attached to it, and the plan was to expand Colgate Park with that piece of land that's kind of adjacent to it. Those are still the plans, and that the city hopes to expand that portion of it. What has happened here is that the funds, certain funds have been identified by the county, and they're saying that they won't pay a certain percentage of that project, and it totals about seventy thousand dollars. So that seventy thousand dollar part of that expansion cannot be funded under CDBG. So really, what this is, this is an opportunity for the city to move funds to another project. If we didn't do that, we would end up losing that seventy thousand dollars. All of the things that are happening now is kind of related. The baseball field, which is underway, High and Alden Street Park, and Colgate are all things that are dealing with, you know, what we want to do to the parks and enhancing the opportunities. So the hope is to move forward with Colgate, but to move that seventy thousand dollars so we don't lose it. And what we're trying to move it to is the current park at High and Alden, which is almost completed. Those funds we're looking at utilizing to put in the irrigation system, I think we talked about this a little bit with the baseball field, that Orange is in, Orange and the kids and the community are in desperate need of more space and more land and improving and upgrading the parks. So all three things are related in a sense, and that's the overall plan, to have those facilities online. If you notice, High and Alden Street Park, there's a big open area, which down the road, we hope to have a Phase Two, and either put a hundred-yard field or something in there like that. But in the meantime, since it's going to be a grass field, and we expect that it's going to be highly utilized, we want to put in the irrigation system, and we also want to make sure that the grass is maintained. So the field is not like some of the current parks now, where you see people playing soccer, for example, and they actually just run through the field, and now it's dirt.
Right.
So that's, that's like a short story.
So if the council approves this resolution, how much money would be left in the Colgate Park Fund?
Two hundred thousand dollars. And so did you know, so the next time if I come back, I am, and Mr. Matt and other people, I'm anticipating trying to find that seventy thousand dollars so Colgate can move forward. I don't know what that means, but we definitely want to move forward.
Concerning High and Alden Street Park Project, there's a tank there that has to be pulled up. Has it been pulled up yet?
The tank has been pulled up, and now the soil is being tested. And once that is done, we anticipate the park being brought back online very, very shortly after that. But, you know, the city has a duty of due diligence to make sure everything is okay.
We're keeping our fingers crossed on the test that's being run. Well, since we're on parks...
Are you still going to stay on this resolution?
Yeah, same resolution. But since we're on parks, we have a contractor doing some things right now in Central Playground.
Yes.
Why is the city cutting down trees in Central Playground?
Oh, I don't believe the city's cutting down trees. That's a private contractor. The city trimmed some of the trees, but I don't think we took any trees down. I think that the trees needed to be trimmed years, years, years ago, so we just trying to expedite and help the project move forward, but I know we not cutting any trees down.
Because I rolled through, and I saw the cherry picker.
Yeah.
All right. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mays? Councilwoman Neeson?
Mr. Mays, while you're there, and just real quickly, I know this is on that resolution, but while we're considering putting High and Alden online, could we just make sure in that plan, we figure out a way, and I guess we need to do that with the police director, how not to let that become a hangout, so the kids can't use it?
Absolutely, yes. And we need to talk about what our plans are for roads to move on forward.
Mr. Mays? Seventy thousand taken away from Colgate going to High and Alden, what does that represent? What are you taking, what are you going to cut on that contract?
The part, it's not what I'm going to cut, it's what they will not fund, and they will not fund anything that deals with soil remediation. So that piece that's being carved out is not an arbitrary piece. It represents seventy thousand dollars of remediation work that needs to be done on that land that hopes to become part of the park.
Got you. Thank you. Councilwoman Corbett, any other?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Council members, any other resolutions and ordinances for discussion?
With your permission, I should say that I do have some concerns about the particular resolution that you just discussed.
Three thirty-eight? Three thirty-seven, I'm sorry.
Three thirty-seven.
Yes.
And my concerns are for a number of different reasons, and I was discussing this with the CFO this afternoon, and we plan to have a discussion with Mr. Mays on tomorrow. But the notion of transferring from one grant to another, that's, that notion is not one that I am familiar with, because you don't transfer from grants. The second point is that whenever grants are awarded, there must be award letters, and those award letters are used as the basis for entering those grants into the budget. And I have asked for copies of award letters for CDBG, and CFO has indicated to me that she has not seen any award letters for CDBG grants. So it concerns me that we don't have, or that the finance department has not received those award letters. If a granting agency provides a grant, and there's a request to repurpose what was the intended use of that grant, you get permission from the granting agency, and you're able to repurpose those funds simply with a letter from the granting agency. There is no action that is required by the governing body. So this one has me a bit puzzled, quite honestly. And so we intend to have a discussion about this tomorrow for a number of reasons. One, to find out where the award letters for CDBG grants are. Number two, I see there's a Resolution 263 that was adopted on August 7th, which is submitting a request for CDBG funds to S. Skunki. I don't know that these funds have already been awarded. We don't have anything that would suggest they have been. And so I'm a little concerned about this whole process, and so I just want to share that with you.
Councilwoman Williams? Councilwoman Neeson?
I have a question on three three nine dash twenty thirteen.
Three three nine?
That's the bill list.
Page, Councilwoman Neeson?
Page one. When did we start to send flowers? Because the first reason I'm asking, because there has been a lot of people that have lost parents and different things, and no flowers were sent. And I thought we normally did that out of our pockets, we paid for them ourselves.
Mr. Matt?
I don't have the answer. I don't know when we started this, I just arrived.
Mr. Scarry?
Somebody had to order them.
No, your question is, when did we start this?
Yeah.
And I don't know when this was started.
These are an expense of the mayor's office, you'd have to ask the mayor's office that question.
Because if we're going to do it for one employee, we should do it for all. So I would like that, well, when we get to the time to remove it, till we figure out how we're going to be consistent in that process. Page three? I'm looking on the account three oh one, three eleven eighty-two. If you go down to the bottom, is that a duplicate?
Mr. Matt?
Page three?
Yes.
At the bottom of page three.
It's at the bottom, and it's in the middle, and it's account three oh one, Office Materials and Supplies, three eleven eighty-two.
It is the same per capita, and it appears here twice. I do not know if it's a duplicate.
So can we remove one until we figure it out?
We can certainly check that, yes.
So we're going to deduct that from the amount, three eleven?
So for, we'll just take out the bottom one? So we just, because this, the bottom one?
Yes, just remove the bottom one.
Is there any other items? No, or are you just looking at it?
I have one, it's Councilwoman Neeson, Miss Spanish.
I'm finished. Councilwoman, Joseph Bell?
Yeah, bill is page four. Cell phone service for August, this is under, well, the Police Department Communications. Cell phone service for nine twenty, I thought every month it would be like a regular bill, and so I don't know with the nine twenty, why that shows up. That's exorbitant for one month.
Mr. Matt?
This could very well be for a number of cell phones, but we would have to check that. I don't know if the police director is still here.
Director Sims?
I'm sorry, did you repeat that, please?
One page, do you have a copy?
I don't. No, I didn't.
Right here. Page four, cell phone service, August 2013. It says from nine twenty-seven through October ninth. I don't understand why it's so much.
There was an issue with the cell phones. I don't think it was paid, maybe the month before, for some reason. I think it may be doubled up.
We would have to check.
Yeah, we have to check, because I'm not certain why it is that high, because we do have several phones that are used for investigative purposes. So I have to look at the individual plans and phones to see what that's about.
Okay.
Mr. Matt, page eleven?
Okay.
Well, this says recreational banners, thirteen inch, five ninety-six. Do you know which banner that is?
No, I do not.
Can you...
I can have that checked, and I can get back to you on that.
I'm sorry?
Is there anyone from the recreation?
Community services? Mr. Matt, I'm going to ask if that can be removed. And as, as a matter of courtesy, I would also ask, going forward, there's a major banner, and I'm putting it to you for your discussion, on Main Street. Nothing in this city should go out without both the administration and the governing bodies naming it. For instance, this.
Okay.
And that's the same thing, I don't know if you've seen the banner on Main Street, that's at the bottom of Main Street, and there's the same issue that, with the heading, all headings should be both the administration and the governing body, and that's something we've asked for probably a year now, and it has not been a year or two. So I'm going to ask if this is removed, and to see what it is, and make sure we can have a discussion in that we're compliant going forward with headings on items that go out for the city. If you can have that discussion at your meeting?
Okay.
Councilwoman Williams? Councilwoman Neeson?
Could you also include in that how that sign got on Alden and High, just the mayor's picture on it?
A sign on Alden?
Who produced that sign?
So it's the same issue?
Same issue.
Mr. Mays, did you do that sign? Mr. Mays?
I think they forget that we have to approve the spending, so that sign is on Alden and High?
On the new park?
Yes.
Yeah, I am a... Yeah, I am aware of that sign.
Did you, did you do that sign?
Did I specifically pick out the writing on it? No, I did not.
On the design?
No, I did not.
Well, I'm just assessing to the council that going forward, anything that does not include the city council, we will not approve the payment of, because first of all, the mayor was not even there when that part was approved and the money was received. So it makes me a little, little suspect that his is the only picture there, when he had nothing to do with that. So in the future, I won't be approving any signs that are not include the administration and the city council. So please make sure that all of our directors keep that in mind.
Mr. Harris, and to take it a step further, I know the City of Newark has legislation regarding headings. Can we review that, and can we have an ordinance going forward about headings?
Mr. President, I respect the opinion of the people who have spoke on this issue. I think there may be another side of the issue, some council members. I don't want my name on any of these signs, because I don't want the signs. So I don't want to bicker over, are we on it, are we not on it? I understand that, and I respect it, but these signs, the purpose of the signs is self-promotion, self-advancement, advertising, political, I, I don't think we need to be spending money on it, period. And that's the other side of this issue.
And I, I hear you, Councilwoman Marv, but I will say there are standard forms that go out, that you have a standard heading that should include both the administration and the governing body, and I just want to make sure that it's a standard, not specifically just, and I've even saying, like, for instance, this flyer, it omits the governing body, and that's not a standard way of submitting flyers to-
Councilwoman Williams, I'm not, I don't, I hope that Councilwoman Marv didn't misunderstand me. I'm not saying we put our individual names on them.
No, no, no.
I'm just saying the council, and the city council.
I understood what you said, and I didn't think you meant your picture either, but-
On the bill list?
Yes, sir.
Page twelve?
Yes.
Under general capital? Home, I guess the check was made payable to promotions, home improvement?
Right.
Replaced two windows? Where were those two windows replaced? And it was done in February?
Mr. Mays, are those the windows in this room here?
Marty Mays, Director of Planning, Development, DPW, I think it was one of the windows up here.
Two.
Two, the two windows in this room here.
Okay, all right, thank you. And one other question on page, page thirteen. Recreation general deposits, movie ticket gift cards.
Mr. Map?
Sixty-seven hundred dollars.
That is an item, there were a thousand tickets, and that is all of the information that I have right now, which was a part of the recreation program for the Moet participants.
And there also was no invoice, no, you realize. Mrs. Scarry, do you know?
I'm sorry, what's the question?
Movie tickets?
Six-
Sixty-seven hundred dollars.
Mm-hmm.
What was it for? Was it for seniors, was it for the Moet program?
I think, Mr. Map, just answer that question.
These were for the Moet program.
It was the Moet program?
Yes. One thousand and six thousand seven hundred and fifty cents.
For what purpose? I mean, what was, giveaway, what?
I would have to get more specific answers from our person who was responsible for this program, but it did pertain to the Moet program.
Council President, I think you know what I'm going to say.
Mr. Map, we're gonna remove this until you have the backup documents, okay?
Council President?
And that's actually the one under it, too.
And could we get a copy of the purchase order, and who signed off on it?
Okay. Mr. Map?
You will.
Okay, so that's six seven, six thousand seven hundred and fifty plus a twenty under it. Okay?
Okay.
Councilmember, any other items?
Was it a good movie?
Motion to adjourn?
Move.
Moved by Councilwoman Jonesville. Is there a second? Nobody wants to adjourn?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Motion to adjourn?
Move.
Second by, first by Councilwoman Jonesville, second by Councilman Corbett.
See, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Mason is back, and she's just disturbing me.
If we could take a five-minute recess. No, I'm sorry, all in favor, actually, we're not going into, we adjourned, so we didn't go into the session, it's five minutes.
Five minutes, for real, right?
Did you talk to Marty?